Fourteenth to order, and I would ask Dean Merrill if you would lead us in the pledge.
Ooh.
Thank you.
Uh-oh.
Oh, it's over here.
I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dean.
Thank you, Mayor.
Could I have roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Henley.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harrington.
Present.
Mayor Aggermonte.
Here.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say we were not in closed session. That's a miracle, I know. And so there's nothing to report out. And I would like to know if we could have approval of any changes to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second that.
Thank you. And could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards.
Aye.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Mayor Protam Harrington.
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this evening, I would like to ask that the meeting dedications to be moved to before comments from the public. And could I have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to change the order of the agenda to move the dedications up ahead of public comment. I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Cook.
Aye.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harrington.
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte.
Aye.
Thank you.
Point of order, are we going to call the vote tallies during the meetings?
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, I think City Manager, I...
As the council and community knows, we had a police incident yesterday, and we've asked Chief Sackett to come give a brief update, and the mayor and council, I believe, was interested in dedicating this meeting to our staff, the police department, and specifically for the officers that responded to the Union 76 station on Sunday. We are thankful that the officer who was shot is in good condition, and as a community, we're lucky to have brave men and women that come out and take care of us when these types of things that occur, because they do occur even in small towns, as we now see. So I think it's important for us to come together as a community and express support. And also, I'd like to ask Chief Sackett just to give a brief public update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and city staff, public works folks. Yeah, so you know, yesterday, Mother's Day was not like most Mother's Day for Sonoma. So right before 11 o'clock, we were sent out to Jolly Washer for an employee who was acting bizarre and was in possession of what initially they thought may have been to be begun. We spent, we sent deputies from the police department to respond out there. The first deputy who arrived on scene made contact with the people, just to ensure that the information he had received was accurate, and then went to make contact with the suspect, who immediately withdrew a gun and fired at the deputy, striking him several times, kind of in the head and torso and arms. The deputy returned fire, did not strike the suspect, and two additional deputies had arrived on scene thereafter and was able to take the suspect into custody with no further incident. So I'm pleased to report that the deputy has been treated at the hospital, and he is released back home. He had received numerous injuries to his hands and forearms and upper and lower torso outside where his safety vest is, and he received several rounds of small pellets from the snake shot round up in his face, including up near his left eye. The good news is, no lasting injuries, and he's a tough cookie, and he's been released to go back home, and we expect he'll have a full and complete recovery, thank goodness. So he and the other deputies that responded, the two, one from the PD and the other from the Valley Substation, again, part of that partnership that we have with the Valley Sub, will be off for a period of time until they can get cleared by the doctors and the psychologists to return to duties. In addition, the sheriff's office, as most police agencies do, take great care in kind of the mental health of our staff, and so we'll be having a complete critical incident debriefing later this week, where we'll invite all the people who were involved in that particular incident, including our dispatchers, just so that we can have a kind of a complete opportunity to kind of provide some closure and support on this. As you know, we turned this investigation over to Santa Rosa Police Department, consistent with our countywide protocol. I just got off the phone with their lieutenant, who's leading the investigation. They have completed all their interviews. They said the staff interviews were remarkably consistent with the witness statements. There was a total of, I think, seventeen witnesses that were interviewed yesterday. The scene has been processed. The lieutenant passed on to me, he couldn't be more proud of the way our staff handled it in the face of this kind of, you know, danger. So what we do know is the suspect is a twenty-year-old Sonoma resident. He lives in town, and he has been known to us before, but doesn't have a lot of extensive history for this type of behavior. He was armed with a nine-millimeter semi-automatic handgun. It was loaded with an extended twenty-round magazine, which of course is illegal in California. He had a second magazine on him as well. What he intended to do with that, we can only speculate, but nonetheless, he certainly had significant amount of firepower to really engage us in the community if he chose to do so. We're thankful that, for some reason, his gun malfunctioned, which made it inoperable, and he wasn't able to clear it, so he discarded it and surrendered. I think what this really highlights is the fact that even the people who work there believe that that may be a BB gun, and we talk a lot about the difficultness that law enforcement has in making decisions about whether guns are real or replicas, if they're loaded or unloaded. It is a very difficult position we find, especially under stress when we're making, you know, immediate decisions, and thank goodness, the officer is in good shape. What is not lost on us, interesting, is yesterday was the beginning of the National Police Officer Memorial Week, where we recognize all those men and women who have lost their lives in the line of duty. So we are thankful, I think, both as a department and as a community, that we didn't add one additional name to that list, and we expect a full recovery. I do want to thank the council for your support yesterday. I know you took time out of your busy day, on Mother's Day, to come down and meet with us to kind of get a full briefing and show your support, so we certainly thank that, including that of the City Manager, Kathy's just been, you know, awesome in this process as well. So that's kind of the update for that. There'll be some more information coming out by Santa Rosa, I think, in a press release either tonight or tomorrow, but that's kind of where we're at currently. And also, what I'd like to do, if I could take just another minute or two, I saw that my thing didn't start, so I still have some time. You have all met Sergeant Jeff Tony. I do like to come to council and introduce new supervisors when they come to the police department, so this is a little bit kind of delayed, because I was out of town when Jeff came and made a presentation to the council at one of our town hall meetings. But nonetheless, this is Sergeant Jeff Tony, and I am thrilled to have him here. Let me tell you a bit about him. He is somebody who's been with our department for about twenty years. He actually has a lot of experience kind of in the retail business, running, helping his family run a retail, so he has a little bit of understanding of what it's like to be in the real world. Came to law enforcement in 1999, I believe. Initially worked in the jail, much like I did, and eventually promoted up to deputy sheriff, and he's had a variety of assignments as he moved his way through the career at the sheriff's department. In 2013, he was selected as violent crimes detective, and he was one of our lead homicide investigators, so he's got a significant amount of experience kind of handling big, massive investigations, including numerous, unfortunately, critical incidents. And so his, I think, leadership yesterday really came through in terms of how that scene was managed with such limited resources and so many people to have to address. Could not be more proud of what he had done. He also has several collaterals. He is one of our tac team sergeants, so he's in charge of kind of operating for, you know, large-scale demonstrations and protests and that kind of stuff, so he's got some experience in there. And he was a use-of-force instructor, as well as he's taught many classes during our annual proficiency training that we do on an annual basis. So we are thrilled to death to have him here. He is a sharp guy. He's a man who's got great leadership, and so it's really a wonderful opportunity, and we're so thankful that we have the chance to kind of, you know, pick the best of the best in these contract cities, and so he's one of those people. So I don't know if Jeff wants to say anything. He's a man of few words, as you can say, but nonetheless, I'll certainly let him do if he wants to, and if not, I just want to welcome him to the community, so.
I think Jeff, even if, welcome, Jeff.
(applause).
I think for those that are watching on TV, even if Jeff, if you don't want to say a few words, if you wouldn't mind standing at the podium and just saying hi, so that...
Do your weight, Jeff.
Welcome.
Sir, Madam Mayor, city council members, thank you. Appreciate some of you I've met on previous occasions, but thank you, Chief. I appreciate the opportunity in being selected to come out to Sonoma PD and serve the citizens. I will say that one of the biggest things that I've noticed in this city, the city of Sonoma, is the appreciation of the civilian staff, or civilian folks out here. I've been approached multiple times with a, hey, how are you during the last critical incident that happened on Ramon? I was approached probably a handful of times, people just saying, hey, thanks for what you do. That certainly is encouraging to hear, and a breath of fresh air. So I'm looking forward to a long, long future here, and working with everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you.
(applause).
Thank you, Sergeant Tony. That was more than a few words. So I'm really excited for you to be with us, because I know it's so important for you to bring your experience to the city of Sonoma, and of course, we all thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So I wanted to thank, I wanted to say generally to you, Chief Sackett, thank you for your service, as well as your department, and of course, our officer. We never anticipate this, these issues to touch or happen in Sonoma, but yet, here we are. So I hope your officer, our officer, will have a speedy recovery, and we'll be very happy to see him back on the scene, and I'm sure he will as well. So thank you so much, and please extend our thoughts to him. And if anyone from the council would like to share something, it certainly would be appropriate now.
Oh, just to add that we're, I think we're dedicating this meeting to that officer, and we're not going to release his name, but he's in our thoughts tonight, and thanks for being here and telling the public what happened.
I'll go. I know we're not releasing his name tonight, but I ran into some of his compatriots over in Petaluma today and extended the offer that we made through the Rotary Club, anything we can do for the officer and his family. So, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everyone involved, and I did like the fact that it was very open to the public. I was happy to see the live interview that you did on Facebook with the Index Tribune, but, but thank you. I know that it's a, it's a tough job out there, and I have a lot of respect for everything you do.
And I would just say, in general, thank you for everything. I think yesterday reminded us how much risk that you guys put yourselves in, and I am just so thankful that he is home from the hospital, and got to see his family yesterday, and hopefully, we're a little bit safer now.
Thank you very much, and I also wanted to add, I would like to, as, I'm sorry, vice, oh god, I don't want to mix your jacket. (laughing). As Vice Mayor said, I would like to dedicate this evening to the dedicated staff of our police department, and specifically for the officers that responded to the Union 76 station on Sunday. We are thankful that the deputy who was shot is in good condition as a community. We are lucky to have brave men and women in law enforcement to protect our community. I encourage the community to express their, to express their appreciation as well. Thank you so much. Thank you. (applause). Now I have to sign on to the computer. Let's see where I'm, okay. Public comment. All righty. At this time, at this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. It is recommended that you keep your comments to three minutes or less under state law, unless otherwise permitted, under the Ralph M. Brown Act. The merits of the matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the city council at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, please, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the item comes up for council consideration. Upon being acknowledged by the mayor, please step to the podium and speak into the microphone. Begin by stating and spelling your name. If there's anyone here this evening who would like to speak on issues not on the agenda... Well, seeing no one rise and move, and forward to the podium, I will move on to presentations. And that is a proclamation for the National Public Works Week, and I guess that's why we see these gentlemen here, our gentlemen here this evening. Oh, look how nice. (pause). This is a proclamation from the city of Sonoma, National Public Works Week, May 20th through the 26th, 2018. And whereas it is the pub, it is in the public's interest for us, the citizens, civic leaders, and children of the city of Sonoma, to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in our community. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960, and now therefore, it be proclaimed, I, Mayor Madeline Aggermonte, do here, do hereby designate the week, May 20th through 26th, 2018, as National Public Works Week. I urge all of our people to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. In witness thereof, whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sonoma to be affixed this fourteenth day of May 28th, 2018. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you. Would anybody like to get up and speak?
Thank you, Mayor Aggermonte, and the council for acknowledging Public Works Week. It's an annual event, and I'm here on behalf of our awesome public work staff. We just have the streets team represented here, but we also have the sanitation district, the waste hauler. Public works is a big field, and the private sector also supports the public works infrastructure constructed by private development, and it's all part of...
(pause).
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
(applause).
Mayor Aggermonte, too, there's, we have one more presentation that the Public Works Director will give, and then after that, honoring the streets team, maybe we can take a picture with the full council at the end of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And wherever you would like to sit, Mayor Aggermonte, members of the council, since it is Public Works Week coming up, it's a good time to acknowledge our streets team, but also public work staff in general. So we just talked about the Public Works Week in general, and the services that Public Works provides to communities all over our country, and we do maintain and operate and improve the city's infrastructure here in the city's Public Works Department, transportation, water distribution, water well supply, storm drainage, parks and trails, the city-owned streetlights, buildings, and cemeteries. So lots covered in Public Works here in Sonoma. And, you know, this public infrastructure is the foundation that underlies everything that happens in Sonoma. It drives the city businesses, the community, people driving around, doing everything everyone wants to do with their lives. They really rely on everything we do behind the scenes to get up and go and do what they want to do. And I really feel it's a great career for all of us that work in public works. It's something you can feel good about doing, just being that foundational support for the community. Since we have parks in Public Works, we also support events that happen on the plaza and throughout the community, and also the other utilities coordinating with the sanitation district, with the waste hauler. And in that role, we have twenty-one full-time staff positions, two part-time positions. And again, this presentation is just in acknowledgement of Public Works Week. So we have some general staff that support everything we do in the Public Works Department, and this slide highlights those folks. Colleen Pratt, who's here also is our photographer tonight, answers the phone and politely connects the people in the communities that are calling, have an issue, and with the people who can do something about it. So that's a really important customer service role for our department. Kat Wall, who unfortunately is sick today, but you see Kat plenty, so you know who Kat is. She keeps our projects moving from concept through pre-design, design, and construction. Recent examples include the West Napa Street Water Replacement Project, the Slurry Seal Project, the Sidewalk Repair Contract we have going on now, and the Street Rehabilitation Project we're just wrapping up. Chris Peg leads our city stormwater compliance with our stormwater discharge permit, which is a huge thing to keep, or work towards, having fishable and swimmable creeks in Sonoma and every place downstream. But he also provides GIS mapping and technology support. So recently, I've had him doing a lot of work supporting the water rate study, getting information in a form to share with our consultant that's working on that. And then Trent Hudson has major responsibilities overseeing the three field, well, actually four parks, water, streets, and cemeteries, and the field side of our Public Works team. We've had a lot of discussions about the fires, and haven't really highlighted the roles that these folks had in the October fires, except for Colleen, who was on a cruise at the time and not even around Sonoma, but everyone else was actively engaged as emergency service workers during the fires. Chris provided up-to-date, working in the EOC, provided up-to-date maps of the local evacuation areas, which were excellent resource to have in the EOC, and also at the evacuation centers. People really appreciated having those local up-to-date maps. Kat also worked in the EOC, keeping evacuees supplied with food and other necessities, coordinating with other folks, other city staff in the EOC. And then Trent, of course, coordinated the field operations and also kept the EOC functioning, made sure the trash was picked up all over town, that things were clean and functional, so all the emergency responders could do what they needed to do. Since Trent has field operations and we're here honoring the streets team, I'd like Trent to introduce Street Supervisor Dean Merrill.
Yes, good evening, Trent Hudson, Operations Manager. We're very fortunate to have a street team that keeps everything moving in and through Sonoma in a, in a safe, organized manner, whether it's pedestrians, vehicles, stormwater. It's all led by Dean Merrill, who's our street supervisor and also Public Works Inspector. And I'll let him get up here and say a few things about his team. Thank you.
Thank you, Trent.
Mayor Aggermonte, council, thank you very much. I was doing good till Chief said "TV," and I'm like, what? Wait, what? So please forgive me if I mispronounce words. Anyway, I am the street supervisor, a title I've held...
Excuse me, Dean. I wanted to tell you the cameras are new.
Oh.
Clear.
Oh.
And they pick it all up.
Okay. Good to know.
If there is a remote, there, Dean, if you want to make slides.
Okay, thank you. That's another thing I'll have to learn. So I want to thank everybody for their time. I'm, as I said, the street supervisor, a title I've held since 1993 with the city of Sonoma. And our job is to maintain street surfaces, repair asphalt, pothole damage, repair the streets after water leaks. We do storm drain, ditch line operation, maintenance, painting, our street legends and throughout the town, concrete work. We work with code enforcement. We also assist other departments and agencies, excuse me, as needed, with the police and fire. We also do facility work. So we stay busy with a small crew. I'm sorry. And with that said, we also do the parades and the events, the Fourth of July and Vine Engine, which is always a lot of fun, a lot of work, but a lot of fun. So at this time, some of the pictures you see up there is our street crew. I believe that's me on the backhoe, which is a rare scene, because I'm usually doing other things. Our guys with the thermal machine there, one of our guys, Wilson, looks like he's, was that the bus, Trent?
Yeah, the bus.
Yeah. And as you can tell there, we do a lot of work with adverse weather. We do a lot of fun things, too. So how do I move this slide? Oops. Oh. So I'll introduce some of the street workers that are here tonight, and I like that picture of me. I guess that was during the fire. I think we were coming back to the corp yard after we evacuated. We lived in masks for about a week straight. So with that said, one of my crew members, Wilson Trude, he's a twenty-year veteran of the city. He's unable to attend tonight. He mainly operates our street sweeper and maintains it daily. He roughly will sweep between ten to twenty miles a day. He don't think much, but it's all curb line at two miles an hour. It's a long haul, and he's very highly skilled in concrete work. His work is all over town. He's always willing to help other people in other departments. Our other crew member is Francisco Flores, who's with here tonight. Francisco's been with the city fifteen years now?
Fifteen.
Yeah. He mainly, he is my crew leader. I give him directions, and he goes to the crew and makes sure we get done what I want done. He operates all our equipment. He mainly loves our paint machine and our thermal machine. We call him the Picasso of painting in the streets. He's the one who paints your red curbs, your yellows, everything out there. He has other responsibilities, obviously, and works tirelessly with that. Our other member is Chris Wild. He's been with us three years, and he's unable to attend tonight, too. Chris is new to us, only been with us three years. He has high, high maintenance skills. He comes from a construction background and really helps us out. He also is our backup operator to the sweeper and runs our equipment. And lastly, is our newest employee, Mr. Tom Bloom, right here. He's only been with us nine months now. I'm sure he's excited to make a career out of this. He comes to us with highly mechanical background, lives here locally, and I can't wait to see what the next few years bring him. And with that said, I do appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
We just had a couple more pictures, clearing storm drains. That's all right. People forget when they're home snug and it's pouring down rain outside that we have folks out in the rain, and I'm trying to keep the town from flooding. Of course, we talked about street sweeping, and then this is all part of public safety, having the streets well marked. And then, again, just closing, Public Works Weeks coming up, and we want to invite you to join us for our Public Works Week celebration out at the Corporation Yard. We'll have a potluck that Wednesday, May 23rd, and you're all invited... We'll have a potluck that Wednesday, May 23rd, and you're all invited for a social occasion. And again, I'm really proud of all the public works staff and the folks that are here tonight, and thank you all for being here as part of the Public Works Week celebration and acknowledgement of the streets team. And thank all of you, too, and the city manager, and even the city attorney's office. We can't do what we're doing out there, supporting the community, without you all doing your service and doing what you do to keep the city functioning. So it's all a big team, and your leadership is part of it all, of supporting a thriving Sonoma. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, photo, photo op.
Hold on, Chief. I didn't do this yet.
Are you going to take a picture?
Yep. No, I'll have. You're good?
Yes.
One, two, three. It says, "Changing batteries."
Stormwater?
There is a on button.
One, two, three, stormwater? All right. One more here. I'm missing one face. There we go.
Thank you.
I would like to recognize my mother, who's in the audience today, from Alabama.
Jackie.
I guess the public, what should I say? Yes, she was in time for Mother's Day, and we went wedding dress shopping together yesterday with Sean's mom.
Wow.
Thanks for coming, Mom.
Welcome. So, let's see. All items, I guess, an explanation. You know, our gentleman, he usually runs the tape for our, and sound for our meetings, is no longer here in this room, but he must be in, what can we call it, the control room?
There you go.
He's in the control room. So we're really stepping, kicking it up a notch here in the city of Sonoma. So I'm into consent cal-, oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to take everybody's role here today.
This is the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items, and members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. At this time, council may decide to change the order of the agenda.
All righty. And I'm going to ask the council, do you have any, do you would like to change anything? No comments? I'll take it out to the, for public comment, if anybody would like to speak. I'm not seeing anyone rise and approach the podium. I'll close comment and-
I would like to make a motion to approve items 3-1 and 3-2 on the consent calendar.
Four?
Nope. Nope. Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve items 4.1, 4.2, and 4.3 on the consent calendar.
Second.
And could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Agramonte?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
And now I'm turning this over to the city clerk.
Moving into our public hearing, discussion and possible action on the following. A presentation by the Sonoma Ecology Center on the Sonoma Garden Master Plan Update, general scope and components of the proposed Sonoma Garden Park Master Plan, and authority to initiate a formal use permit application process for review of the Sonoma Garden Park Master Plan Update, and three, the adoption of a resolution to waive use permit application fees.
At this point, I'm going to turn this over to the city manager and the associate planner to give a staff report and presentation.
Great, thank you, Mayor Agramonte and councilmembers. We're going to start with our associate planner, Wendy Atkins, and then David Goodison, our planning director, may also have a comments, some comments at the end. And I believe there'll be, so I'll turn it over to Wendy.
Thank you, city manager, Capriola, and good evening, Mayor Agramonte and councilmembers. The Sonoma Ecology Center is in the process of updating the Sonoma Garden Park Master Plan. The master plan was originally approved by the city council back in 2005. And because the property is owned by the city of Sonoma, the city council must authorize the use permit application prior to review by the Sonoma County Agricultural Preservation and Open Space District, Community Services and Environment Commission, and Planning Commission. And ultimately, the city council will have final review over the master plan itself. In addition to the initial review this evening, the Sonoma Ecology Center is asking the city council to waive the use permit application fees in the amount of $2,017. Some of the highlights of the plan include the expansion to include the Pauline Homestead with educational facility and a caretaker residence. And this includes the addition of 10 to 12 parking spaces, including a new facility in the form of a small dwelling unit for a park manager or caretaker. And if the council is interested in supporting this, supporting this expansion and including, including the housing for the caretaker, legal staff should review the bequest and conservation easement to ensure there are no issues. And the Sonoma Ecology Center will also need to consult with the Open Space District. A new gazebo gathering place is proposed, two children's play areas, general improvements to the public campfire and/or outdoor education area, ADA permanent restrooms, new wayfinding interpretive signs, a new grape arbor, expand the use of non-potable water, and the installation of a habitat hedge row along the boundary fence to the northeast and south property lines, improved road to the nursery facilities with a hammerhead turn at the end to allow for emergency fire access. And last but not least, the installation of an electronic, or electric charging station. At this time, I'd like to introduce Richard Dale, Executive Director, who will outline current programs at the Sonoma Garden, and Manona Heveland, she's a planner and grants development manager, who will present the master plan. And then we'll all be available to answer questions. Thank you.
So I'm turning on a clock here, so I stay within my time limit. I'm Richard Dale, and again, I'm the Executive Director at the Sonoma Ecology Center, and I believe there are some slides and-
They're coming up. There they are.
That's Veggie Burger, our cow. So I'm here to talk about the master plan update with Manona, but I wanted to first give you a background, some shameless plug about the Ecology Center, but a background on the programs that are at the garden park. So first, the shameless plug part, the Ecology Center. We've been here for 28 years, and we work with our community to identify and lead actions that achieve and sustain ecological health in Sonoma Valley. We consider our work to be, well, that's interesting, to be looking out for the foundations of the community, land, air, water, and biodiversity. And then we have a number of things that we have done over the years, in the last decade. 12,000 K-12 students from every school we've served with in-depth science lessons and field trips to sites around Sonoma Valley, 5,000 acres and eight local parks protected or established, 20 stream miles opened up and restored for native fish. Underneath that, that says 290 sites that were contained to keep toxins out of waterways in Sonoma Valley in the recent fires, over $20 million and 70,000 volunteer hours brought to the community to help preserve Sonoma Valley's environment. So we asked ourselves some questions as we were beginning to talk about the garden park. How can we have healthier, more sustainable food? How can we use water, energy more wisely? How can we have more sustainable landscapes that support biodiversity? And how can we make connections that support the community to be more sustainable? And so we feel we answered these questions with, with the Sonoma Garden Park's efforts and our vision, which is a hub of educational activities and a community resource that celebrates the intersection of people, food, and nature. So that's enough of me reading slides here, but I wanted to at least give you some of the background on where we're coming from. If you haven't been to the garden park, we're located out in the east side, near the Corporation Yard on Seventh Street near Denmark. It's highlighted on the map there. A bit of our history, the garden park was created when councilmember Robert Kennard, Sr., came to the Ecology Center in the early 90s and said, "We need an agricultural program here in Sonoma Valley." And so he worked with us, and we eventually came up with the idea of establishing something out of the Sonoma Garden Park area now, the Pauline Bond property. And the Bond property had been left to the city in a will, in her will. She was a schoolteacher, a really amazing woman who left her property to the city. And the only thing she'd said and stipulated in her will was that it needed to be left as a park. So it sat vacant for years, the city not knowing quite what to do with it because it was outside the city limits and it didn't seem like it's something that quite fit any of the normal procedures. So Kennard's idea was to use this and develop it over time. And so we began with a farm and just raising vegetables and hired a farmer and grew vegetables for sale around the community. But we quickly figured out they needed a lot more than that. And so over the next decade, with a tremendous amount of volunteer input, we began to develop infrastructure and develop the basic sort of bones of the facility and improve the soil a lot. Then towards 2000, we realized we really needed a more organized systematic way of approaching the garden park, so we began to develop a master plan. And working with the city of Sonoma, developed the first master plan, which Wendy noted was approved in late 2005, early 2006. And through that process, we established all the things that bring us to the master plan of today, the basic infrastructure and a lot of the programs that we have at the garden park. And it's come a long way. As you can see in this aerial photo, the original landscape was completely barren, except for the house and barn, which are no longer there. A few really amazing plants around that house, including a 400-year-old, 200-400-year-old heritage valley oak. It's really impressive and important. But all the rest of the facilities you see out there have been developed over the, over the course of the last 15, 20 years of volunteer input. So some of the programs that we deliver out of the garden park, every fourth-grade student, almost every fourth-grade student, we serve every school and most of the private schools in Sonoma Valley, comes out to the garden park as part of a long program where we're in schools for six lessons and then out to the garden park for a day. And they learn a lot about how the food web works and get their hands in the soil and work with our volunteers and other community groups like master gardeners and our specialized education staff that bring a lot of opportunity to these kids. And we think it's a great program. Many of them think it's the highlight of their school year, so we must be doing something right. And then we also have a summer science camp in the Harry Potter theme, so the kids don't know they're learning science and horticulture, but it's a really great thing, and three different week-long programs out there, including a sleepover on the last week, and kids really love that as well. And then we have a lot of adult workshops, from pruning to low-water management of gardens to floral arranging. A lot of things happen out there, and over 200, 350 people last year attended workshops. And then we have a state-of-the-art plant nursery with a greenhouse that was supported by the city of Sonoma and especially by the Sonoma Valley Rotary, and two large shade structures where we raise over 12,000 plants. And these are used in restoration projects around the region, but especially in Sonoma Valley to restore habitat. And then also, plants are grown for the garden park and for sale at the harvest market. We also have an environmental leader intern program, which is one I'm particularly fond of. Teens from ages 14 to 18 come through this program. They apply, they get interviewed like they're going into real jobs, they're paid wages. They learn job skills, they learn, and sometimes they're fired, but usually we're able to coach them how to do things right. Many of this experience go on to become professionals in agriculture and in science, and they credit their time working with us in this. So it's a really great program for teens, and this program has been emulated in other places around the county, and we're really proud of the work that's been done here and our educators. Maybe something will come up here. Community garden plots, there's 39 community garden plots shared currently by about 60 individuals and groups and individually. People love to go out there. Sometimes they're even competing for the best garden space and the best-looking garden space, but it's really great, and people tend to really enjoy it. We also have demonstration gardens that help people when they're planning, landscaping, to learn how to do water-wise, pollinator, medicinal kinds of demonstration areas, and these are mostly tended by volunteers. And so it's really great to see what people do with their different themed gardens in these areas. And as I mentioned, we have a Saturday Harvest Market during the harvest season, which is May through October on Saturday mornings. It's one of the best ways to get people out and introduced to the park, but then they can also pick up fresh vegetables that are raised by local volunteers. And there's also a flower team that raises amazing flowers for the, for the community there as well. I mentioned that we have a lot of classroom work out there. The fig forest is a special place, especially in the heat of the summer, a shady, cool place covered by six antique fig trees, and it's a well-loved place, especially by my now-10-year-old who still wants to go out to the garden and climb around the trees. A number of special events also occur out of the garden park over different seasons. And then I also don't want to undervalue the fact that it's amazing habitat, that 400-year-old tree that I mentioned, as well as a number of smaller habitat features, including a native bee garden that's maintained by the people from UC Berkeley. It involves a lot of different labor and activities, keeping the habitat really nice. Audubon has recognized it as a bird sanctuary. So there are a number of things in the garden park that support local animals and pollinators and cool insects, and I think that's an important feature to remember about any park. So by the numbers, over 7,000 users, we have two staff, 50 regular volunteers, and many casual volunteers beyond that, dedicating over 4,000 volunteer hours, 375 fourth graders, 90 campers, 18 environmental leaders, 35 adult workshop participants, 350, I mean, 60 garden plot users, 10,000 native plants, and that's just in last year. And over the last decade, since the last master plan, we've raised nearly half a million dollars, and 30,000 volunteer hours were dedicated to improving the park. So that's kind of the overview of things that are going on right now. For the master plan update, I want to introduce Manona Heveland again, and she's going to talk about the master plan update. This is the way it looked in 2005 when we were doing our designs, and she's going to talk about what it looks like as we go forward now.
I guess I'll just keep your timer here. All right. Hello, everyone. Good evening. Get used to this microphone. So the master plan, previous master plan had a lot of things in it, and the master plan update has many more things in it, so I'm trying to summarize it, and I will gloss over some details, but would be happy to go into more detail with questions. The first thing I want to go over was why we're doing a master plan update. The previous master plan, which was completed in 2005, planned for a lot of the things that are, have been built out in Sonoma Garden Park and are existing now. And now that it's time, there's been increased interest in using the park and using more things in the park and using it in different ways. And so it's time to update the master plan for look at what is the vision for the next 10 years. And one of the things that was left unstated in the last master plan was what would happen in the Pauline Bond Homestead area. You can see in this previous master plan that that is kind of in black and white, and it was thought that the city would do something else with that property and the buildings that were on it. But the buildings that were there have since been razed. They were deemed uninhabitable. They were deemed uninhabitable and dangerous, and so, they were removed. And so, then, that corner of the park has been sitting, and it's actually fenced off from the rest of the park, and no one is able to enter it and go there. So, incorporating that into the rest of the Sonoma Garden Park is an important part of the master plan update. And so, I'm going to go over the master plan update accord to try and organize it under four themes: visitor and educational facilities, access and circulation, and garden and farm features, and then property management and maintenance. So, hopefully, you can follow me as I go along. So, for visitor and educational facilities, there are several improvements we want to make. One of the largest ones is at the annex, what I'm calling the annex, which is that upper northwestern corner of the park that was left out of the previous master plan. And in that area, we envision having a homestead learning center and caretaker housing, but mostly keeping it open and park-like and only building on the footprint of the previously constructed homestead. So, I'm sorry if I'm jumping around a little bit, but... So, you can see there were buildings there, which have been removed, and in the new plan, we would rebuild in that area that was already compacted and impacted by construction. And then, in the driveway of that area of the previous homestead, we would install an entrance and parking facilities, about 10 to 12 parking spaces. But the details of that design would need to be done and permeated, et cetera. And then, also, preserve the grandmother oak, that beautiful heritage oak that Richard was talking about, and interpret it for visitors to understand the value of our valley oaks to the ecology of Sonoma Valley. So, another aspect that's very important to the garden park, although nobody really wants to talk about it, are permanent public restrooms that are ADA accessible. Currently, there is a porta potty and outdoor sink there that is what everyone uses when they go to the garden park, and we would really like to be able to install indoor plumbing facilities for people to be able to use. And with that would be a septic system that would be done to current code. And then, another area that we want to, that exists, but we want to improve, is the picnic campfire area, and that is in the middle-southern area. Sorry, I'll just... There's a picture of it here, and it's a wonderful gathering space, but there's not currently enough shade there, so we'd like to build a few more shade structures and bring in a few more tables, not really expand the area, but just improve the facilities that are there. And another thing that we have a vision to construct is a gazebo gathering space, and that is shown, that would also be partially in the annex area and would provide a small gazebo for holding cultural events or music or presentations, that people could have another gathering space. Then, another visitor and educational facility that we're looking at are children's play areas, and we're looking at doing two children's play areas, which would be, our vision is being made out of natural materials, kind of in the aesthetic of the garden park, which is nature-based and gardening-based, so it wouldn't be really installing playground equipment, but just playground areas that where children could really feel free to play and not damage any of the gardens or orchards that are in a lot of other areas. And then, another important educational and visitor feature are the educational signage, and one of those is shown on the lower right-hand side here, which is interpretation of butterflies. And we have a few other panels. Sorry, the microphone is being weird. And one is for the native habitat of the oak forest, and another would be for the bees that are kept there. What we have, we're going to have an interpretive sign of honeybees, and then one of also native pollinators and native bees. And then, one more panel, which is about birds. And some of these are already existing and are just being refurbished. Okay, so, I'm going to go on and talk about access and circulation. So, one of the biggest change in terms of access and circulation that we're proposing is creating a second entrance to the garden park in the annex area and an additional parking area, which would be similar to the existing parking area constructed out of gravel that would be pervious and kind of, and also with planting, so it would be attractive. And so, then, that, in terms of the parking for the garden park, that would add 10 to 12 spots. The current parking lot has 17 spots, and there are eight parking spaces along Seventh Street, along the frontage of the property. So, there would be, there are currently 27 to 20, there's certainly 27 spaces, and we're proposing that there would be a total of 36 to 38 parking spaces to allow more people to come to the garden park at a time and also just make it easier to access the park. We're not really proposing to change the number of events that we have at the park. The current master plan has us having three to four large events a year, and we would continue that. Otherwise, it would just be small gatherings of, you know, but utilizing the parking that is there, but that parking would be less crowded. So, another thing that we are currently working on doing, which we are adding into the master plan, but it's already underway, is adding new directional signage to the garden park, which has been funded by the county advertising funds, which are funded by the TOT tax. And so, those are, hopefully, can be installed very soon, in June. And in addition, we also are having more, some additional informational signage throughout the park to help interpret and direct people once they're in the park. We currently have ADA accessible features. We hope to continue that and to make that a priority for all new structures and entrances to the garden park. We have programs for disabled people and also try to provide gardens that are attractive to people who are impaired with sight or hearing and make aspects of the park available to people from all different backgrounds and abilities. The current ADA accessible path was funded in large part by the Sonoma Garden Park Matching Grant Program, and we appreciate their support of the garden park. Another access part is improved road facilities to the nursery, which Wendy had mentioned previously. That is to allow, make sure that there is adequate fire response access to the nursery road. It would still be a gravel road, but be improved and improve the turnaround so that if, heaven forbid, fire engines do have to go in there, they don't have any trouble getting in and And then, we also propose, this is actually a suggestion from our meeting with the planning staff last fall, to install an electric vehicle charging station to provide that additional benefit to visitors of the garden park. And we have to figure out the logistics of that, if that is incorporated in the final master plan update. Okay, so, moving along, I'm running out of time. We have, we are basically keeping the garden and farm features. We're expanding the community garden plots because they're very popular, but not outrageously so. They're just growing incrementally, so there would be a total of 40 community garden plots. We're proposing a habitat hedgerow for around the perimeter, which would provide a screen for our neighbors, which they have requested, and also provide additional habitat for birds and pollinators, and provide an example of how people can use the edge of their properties to create habitat throughout developed areas, and that linear habitat can be really beneficial and hopefully could spread throughout Sonoma Valley. We also have beehives and native bees and plan to continue developing them, and we have a grape arbor, which we need to reinstall because it was removed due to the ADA path improvements. We have some property man...
Just a little bit.
Okay, okay. Is that better? Am I hurting everyone's ears? The property management and maintenance improvements, the main ones that we want to do around water storage and irrigation, for using more of the shallow groundwater, which is very near the surface there, to irrigate our gardens in a more sustainable way without using the potable water from the city for plants. We need to build a couple more storage sheds to store the materials we use for maintenance. We currently mostly rely on solar electricity, and we plan to continue that. We use it for pumps, and you can see there's solar panels on top of the barn. And then, we do composting and recycling and plan to continue that and to encourage it in all of our operations. We would like to be doing a hot composting bin, but, or hot composting area, but it would require more staff time. I just wanted to bring to your attention the conservation easement. Wendy has already brought that up. Basically, the conservation easement held by the county of Sonoma restricts the development of the Sonoma Garden Park. It protects the open space, the values that are held at the garden park, which are open space, public access, recreational resources, agricultural value, natural resources on the property. And then, we also, so it restricts certain things like impervious surfaces to less than a third of an acre, and we are making sure that we, all the development that we do or improvements that we make do not expand beyond that third of an acre in terms of impervious surfaces. It restricts signage and also native vegetation removal, so it ensures that we protect the native vegetation there, which is something that we value. And so, the process is that after this is approved, then we will request that the conservation easement re-reviewed by the open space district, and they'll give us any feedback and make sure that the master plan is in alignment with the conservation easement, and then we can go forward with implementing the master plan without having to go back to city council or open space district multiple times as we work on the park for the next ten, few years. Then, I also want to present our operational budget. Is my time out? Should I? No. Okay. Wrap it up, wrap it up. Okay. So, this is just a snapshot of our operational budget, showing where our revenue comes from and what our main expenses are. The labor is our main expense, but we also have materials and supplies, water, utilities, and insurance. Water is a large expense, so we're working on directing our, changing our water so that we can be using the well water that's on site rather than the Russian River water that comes through the pipes. I also have a little snapshot of our capital budget, which don't really have time to go into, but this is a very rough estimate of the investments that we hope to make in Sonoma Garden Park over the next 10 years. Hopefully, this is an overestimate, and everything won't cost this much, but we are just kind of putting, we are putting together estimates of how much we think things will cost so that we could begin planning for them and fundraising and actually implementing some of this vision. And that is my presentation.
Thank you so much, Manona. Now, I'm totally lost. Okay. Can I, at this point, could I ask if you have any questions?
This question is for somebody. Are the easement documents a part of the staff report?
No, they weren't.
Would it be possible to...
We can certainly get those to you.
Yeah, I would love to just see what it says.
Very nothing. David? Amy? Do you have any questions?
I don't. I mean, I guess if we were going to look at additional documents, which would have to be reviewed by the city attorney anyway, I'd like to see the original bequest so that we can make sure that whatever happens is in conformity with that.
All right. At this point, I thank you so much. At this point, I'm going to take it out to the public for any comments. See, nope.
Wait, wait.
We move fast here.
I'm very nervous about speaking in public. Nancy Kirwin, Grove Street. And I hope that all of you have had a chance and opportunity to see the garden park recently. I cannot think of a place in Sonoma that reflects our community more accurately. It provides so much to so many through its school programs, its harvest market, its community plots, its ecologically informed demonstration gardens and projects, its summer camps, and its use as a venue for local gatherings. It reflects both our roots and our future, cutting-edge technologies of energy and water efficiency and organic agriculture. How many parks provide so much for so many, so uniquely, so reasonably, so gloriously, in such a perfect Sonoma way? Where it has shortcomings is in available parking, adequate restrooms, a live-in caretaker, a more unified and attractive street front, and an education center. Those issues and more can all be addressed under the new master plan. Why leave the park, previous, the parks, previously residential portion of the bond property outside the park? It was always intended to be all one parcel. It is currently not being kept up as well as the garden park and may become an attractive nuisance. A resident caretaker could help nighttime intruders, keep nighttime intruders at bay. Through unification, the grandmother oak could also be recognized and protected as a treasured heritage oak in a more visible manner. And when the new master plan is approved, it will provide the necessary space and opportunity for the garden park to meet the needs described above. Please consider allowing the process to go forward.
Thank you. Very well done. Thank you so much. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing no one rise to the podium, I will close the public comments. So, I'm bringing it back to the city council for any questions or comments, or if you have any questions of our city manager.
So, to clarify where we are now, this is like opening the door to like a long journey, correct? And a wonderful journey, and I think this is all really exciting. I do have questions about whether it is possible to have, there is the plan to have the one caretaker's little home on there, and I was wondering what exactly the restrictions were. Like, maybe we could have two on there and somehow have it incorporated in there. So, that's why I'm kind of curious about the underlying documents, although I understand that things are pretty restricted with the use. I love a lot of things on there. I live right by the garden park and admittedly, don't go there as much as I should, and I think that having the little kid play stuff is just brilliant to get more people going there. And as far as the resolution to waive the fees associated with the use permit application, is this the application for the whole plan that's going forward? And what's the timeline on that?
Yes. This is the application for the use permit review, and ultimately, the use permit and the master plan itself will be subject to final review by the city council. And the timeframe is probably going to take us through September to have all the different commissions review it and have it come back to you.
And at some point, it has to go by open space, too, for them to...
Right.
Sign up.
So, part of this process is authorizing an application for the open space district to review the plan itself and compare it to the conservation easement.
Well, I would support waiving the fees, but what exactly does that mean? Are we just going to eat it, or is there a fund that it comes out of?
So...
Or a discretionary fund?
Yeah, it could come out of council discretionary. In some ways, I guess I look at planning staff a little differently. I think as we move forward, if we're going to look at trying to do broader cost recovery from planning, then we could have basically from the council discretionary fund, that money go back and pay these fees so that planning is a cost-recovery function is kind of more kept whole. If this was, you know, something in fire, a general fund, pure general fund, maybe you wouldn't. It can not, it can also just be the fees are waived and we don't get the... It can not—it can also just be the fees are waived and we don't get the revenue, and staff then from the planning department is working without that revenue to cover their time. I think in this instance, I would rather take the discretionary funds, which we have not utilized much this year, and then move that over to do the backfill. That's my recommendation.
It seems to do it that way instead of creating a little hole in the budget. And I also wanted to say that I really appreciate the Sonoma Ecology Center for having this beautiful project that I know that the city could not possibly afford to do it ourselves. And I think that you can get a lot more volunteers because everybody loves you, so thank you for that.
Karen?
So I'm encouraged by the grant you said you're getting from the county tourism. I think it'll be great to get people out that direction with all the bicycle companies we have in town now and new ones coming. I think it's a great location to show up. So I've spent—I've probably put a few hundred hours into the garden over the years, and I remember the master plan. I think I still have an original copy of the 2005. And we always wondered then why we didn't have it there, and we had a city employee living in the property there, and it just—you know, we lost an opportunity way back, but that's, you know, water under the bridge now. And I think having the history that I have with Bob Kennard, and so I have a little of the background on Pauline Bond and what hap transpired with all of that, and I think Bob's vision for the garden is what is coming forward now. Richard and I walked the property a few days ago, and it really looks great. I'm very pleased. And we talked about some of the things that I'd like to see with young kids, having opportunities to camp once in a while would be pretty awesome. But I think that's something that we should be open to, and like you mentioned, having another unit. Richard explained to me that they have—there's so much ground coverage that you can have as part of the agreement, but I said, well, maybe we should have a two-story house out there, which would be okay with me. But I think there must be a perk test that you have to do as well with—you know, whatever. But I would be open to a second unit for somebody that's, you know, that's affordable out there, that could be part of maybe one of your staff members, that sort of thing, and something that has the character of the place. So I'm going to be in full support of this because I think it's the right thing to do, and I want to keep that open space down there forever. So, thank you.
Okay. Well, I have slightly different comments. I sort of feel like we're at the end of the process before the beginning, but I understand that we have to allow this to go forward. But I am—I would like to hear from the CSCC and also from the Ag and Open Space about their thoughts about it. I have some concerns about building a residential structure on land that's designated to be a park. We have an old city attorney opinion about that, but I'd like—through this process, I'd like a current opinion. I'm a probate attorney, and I have some understanding of the requirements of fidelity to specific bequests, and I'd like to just make sure that these are authorized uses. And I understand there was a home there, but I don't want any additional liability for failing to keep within the meaning of the original gift that we accepted, so I have some concerns about that. In terms of the investment in the park, I think the park is cool. I've been there. I talked to people that had plots there. They enjoy it. They use it frequently. I support having additional community plots, and I think especially as we—you know, for projects like we just approved, 49 unit affordable housing project that has no backyard, it's going to be really important that people have an outdoor space that they can call their own and, you know, get in touch with with their kids or just themselves farming, gardening. So I think that's really important. I'd like to see increased use of the park. I think it is, to some extent, somewhat of a hidden gem at this point, and given the dedication of our resources, I really want to make sure that it's kind of like people know that they're allowed to go there and that it's open to the public. That's really important to me, forward-going. And I know in the original master plan and reviewing it, there was already a plan to have the bathrooms built, but I guess the funds weren't raised to do that. If we're going to tie up the additional portion of the property with a long-term lease, I'd like a better understanding of how the fundraising is actually going to be accomplished. The prior fundraising, $450,000. I did look at your 990s, and it looks like you make about $1 million a year from different revenue sources, so I suppose the $450,000 is not for ongoing programs, but it was for infrastructure. But there is—it appears from your 990s that there's quite a bit—not quite a bit, but there's about $1 million a year that comes into the Ecology Center that I guess is not being spent on these capital programs now. So I have a variety of questions that don't need to be answered tonight. I think that through this process, they could be answered and fleshed out, but I think—anyway, in general, I wouldn't be prepared to rubber stamp it tonight, but I really would like to hear from the CSCC and the Ag and Open Space and have some additional thoughts about kind of all those topics. But I do think it's a wonderful program, and my children have gone to summer camp there, and I've gone to the harvest market, and, you know, there are a lot of great things going on. But since we're talking about a long-term lease, an additional development of a program, you know, we haven't done an RFP for anyone else to find out if they have ideas about what they would do with this property, if they had access to it. We have done—we're—I don't think anybody from the city was really deeply involved in drafting this update to the master plan, so we're being asked to whole cloth accept a plan that was put together, a four-city property that we weren't part of at the end of the process. And so I guess I would have preferred to have at least somebody from the city council, like more involved in the—or the CSCC, more involved in the guts of figuring out what we're going to do with the city property. But I'm not against it, but I have questions about it.
Well, I kind of see this as the beginning of the beginning. There's a lot of history here, and I am in full support of this master plan, and I'm hoping that as it goes through, we'll get a lot of input on what you'll have everything look like. I was out there today. Thank you, Richard, for giving me a quick tour. It was cold. I forgot my jacket. Who would have—who would have thought? So I'd like to go ahead and make a motion for a resolution of the city council of the city of Sonoma to approve a fee waiver request by the Sonoma Ecology Center regarding planning application fees for the update of the Sonoma Garden Park master plan.
I'll second that.
I'd like to make—have my comments as well. I believe that I'm in agreement with what Amy has said. I would like it to go through the process because this seems to be a big investment for this property. And I just want to know, the bathrooms, were they planned to be on the annex area? Is that what I heard? Or somewhere on the property?
No, they're going to be located—sorry, through the—mayor, if I can address that question. Sorry if I interrupted you. Didn't mean to.
No, that's all right.
They're going to be located in the general area of the existing porta potty.
Oh, all right. Okay. That's what I was interested in knowing. And to build something, you know, I don't know how it would be built, but I think there probably will be some input by neighbors, especially this area seems to be very pristine, and I would imagine people have their own thoughts of what they believe a building should be. And so those are just some of the questions I have. I'd actually like to—you know, I do—I thought it was beaut—I think it's beautiful. I have a very—someone I just really admire an awful lot who is a consummate volunteer, I think, not a staff person. I'm not sure. And I just—as I said, shared with you, Richard, I'm not clear about what's going—what the finances are and how that all works, so that's something I'd really like to understand. I'd like—I need to be convinced about the homestead part of it. And so I guess I say I do—I do support this project, but I need—there has to be—I would like to possibly have an ad hoc committee that we will move forward and just check some of these—you know, look at some of these things that we have questions about that don't even need to be discussed this evening. So that's where I am. So would our city manager? Can you direct us? You've heard a first and a second—I mean, a motion and a second.
Yeah, so at this point, you have a motion and a second, so you need to take action on that. Or, Manalyn, you are—sounds like you are maybe offering a friendly addition to create an ad hoc. You could see if the first and second want to accept that. If they don't, then you move forward with the current motion that's on the floor.
So I would just like—okay.
Yeah, I'm just going to support—throw out that I would not support an ad hoc committee. I see this no different from Vintage House. We leased them their space. We released Marcy House, all these assets that the city cannot take care of. I mean, just look at what we did to the Mason Abbey Cottage. That's what happens when we have stuff in our care. And so I think it—not only have we found a great tenant for our property who has improved it, I mean, vastly, they are doing something that the city of Sonoma literally could not do. Like, we want to put time into the plaza. We want to put time into Dupont Park, and we don't have time or money for another park. And I think that they've proven themselves, and I think that bogging it down at this point, they're going to go through the process, they're going to get approvals, we're going to have a final say, but I don't think that it is necessary for us to get involved at a micro level like that.
Yes.
I would have a word of caution as to the ad hoc subcommittee. As I understand the process, the use permit application would go through the planning commission, and it could come back to the council on appeal. So the council will ultimately make the determination on this as the city is the owner of the property, and there could be some concern later in time as to involvement by the council members if the decision were to be appealed back to the council.
I was just going to say that I think the question I was concerned about was rubber stamping a plan without a deep look at what was going on and without a real debate. And that has nothing to do with whether or not you're current good stewards. I think our fiduciary duties require us to—even though we like it and it feels good and everybody likes it, that's great, but we have to go a little bit deeper and say, is it really working and how does it work, and what are the finances? And we have the obligation to do that as the landlord. You're not really tenants because, you know, it's not that kind of a situation. But so I think it's—it sounds like the current process with the planning commission looking at it, or the CSCC and the open space, there is going to be additional review. But I think that's not a critique, but an obligation of fiduciaries, which will be done.
All right. Thank you so much. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I appreciate your presentation, and I hope you've heard what we've said. It wasn't the majority of the city council, but I think we have a right to say those things because those are our concerns, and I'm sure you'll be able to move forward as you go through the process, but we really appreciate what you do. Thank you. Sorry. City manager, I need to take a break.
Great. Should we take a five-minute break?
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. King. All right. Thank you, city clerk.
Yes, we're moving into the regular business. Item 6.1 is receive an update from the council ad hoc homelessness committee and provide direction on sending a letter to the board of supervisors requesting county funding for fiscal year 1819.
Thank you. So Mayor Aggermonte and council members, may I just give a brief update? As the council's aware, the council appoints a subcommittee of Madeline Aggermonte and council member Rachel Hunley to work on homelessness over the next year and update our contract and look at kind of a strategic view forward with SOS, Sonoma Overnight Support. And their conversations have started a little earlier because of a lack of county funding for some of the activities of SOS. So the council has already provides prior redevelopment funding of $30,000 a year to SOS. In addition, you've made a one-time allocation for 1819 to continue to support the homeless shelter at the Haven. Unfortunately, there is also the winter shelter, which is, I won't go into details, but that program has last two years received about $30,000 in funding from the county. And this year was, has not received any funding for 1819. And so after conversations, and I'll let the two subcommittee members speak, and SOS Kathy King, the executive director, and folks are here to elaborate. But the request in front of you is to have the mayor send a letter on behalf of the council requesting that the board of supervisors, as part of their budget, find some funds in order to provide some support for the winter shelter for the 1819 year. With that, I'll turn it to the mayor and a council member.
And I'd also like to add that we have been calling other organizations that are in support of SOS to have, to write support letters as well. So I think that's really important. And if council member Rach Hunley has anything at this point?
Well, we've had a number of meetings, and they haven't all been successful as we would hope. We've met with the community development commission from the county multiple times. Susan Goran has also taken the time to meet with us. And it appears, at least for this year, unless there is some sort of special allocation for funding, which is our current strategy, that there will, as far as the normal funding that they do for homeless support programs, they have decided that Sonoma Valley will get no piece of that, which has been frustrating for us, considering Sonoma Valley has 11% of the homeless population in the county. And we are learning a lot about the process and how they give out money. And it's all very grant-based. Personally, I feel like it involves a lot of bureaucracy, but it's also the system that we have to work with. So going forward, I think that we'll be able to have strategies about that. But in the meantime, we do have this request to get $30,000 for this year to do our winter shelter that has been very helpful in the past years. And I think, I believe, was it last year or the year before, that the SOS winter shelter was held up as like an example as what is possible in cities during our rainy months. And so that's why we need the letter of support today. And then we have lots of plans going forward. Once we get this money piece, like the immediate, get this year taken care of, then we can start looking further ahead, which is what our next plans are gonna be. But it's been nice. Been learning a lot, making some contacts in groups we hadn't talked to yet. And Madeline's very good at scheduling meetings.
[laughing]
That's all I have to say about that.
So at this time, are there, are, do we, do we, any questions from the council? None? And at this point now, I don't know what is planned for Kathy King. Is she here for a presentation?
Yeah, so, no, just public comment. So I think you could have Kathy come up and speak under public comment.
All right. So I'm opening up the public comments session.
I'll go, I'll go note free. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council persons for allowing me to speak tonight. Our request is to have the council send a letter to the board of supervisors that meet on June 5th and to ask for discretionary funds. In the previous three years, we've gotten over $71,000 worth of funding for the winter shelter, which is separate than the funding requests from the Haven. We have served last year 44 unique individuals for 1,000 bed nights. No money coming to the, to Sonoma or Sonoma Valley, to me, is, in Madeline's words, shameful. There are other needs, we know, in Santa Rosa, we know in Guernville, we know in Petaluma. But we also know that homeless people exist here in Sonoma. And that has been disregarded by the county. So we understand that there's, things are complicated. And so we're trying to, at the suggestion of Supervisor Goran, we have also, all our board members are taking five individual organizations, asking for support. We have a boilerplate letter, which I will send to you once it's approved, Thursday at our board meeting. And we're asking groups like La Luz, Seroptimus, hopefully the Rotary and different groups, and Richard just said he would send us a letter of support, to say that please move funding into Sonoma. I mean, it's just a simple thing. Just spread around the funds. Don't have it all in one place. And so our board had thoughtfully opened up the winter shelter. The Sonoma Alliance Church gives us everything for free. They are just the most Christian of Christian churches I've ever seen. They don't charge us for anything. The local Vern's Taxi gives us transportation back and forth. We feed people every night, every morning. And last year, there were people in wheelchairs and walkers, a young girl, seven, and a young, and her mom. So to me, it breaks my heart to be, to say, we don't, at right this point, we don't have the funds for the winter shelter. We've made up the funds, hopefully, for the Haven with the city's help and with this Fund 400. We have people step forward. We've made that up. But the plan now is to go to board of supervisors and ask them to release some discretionary money. We usually, we ask for 60. They usually give us half. So we're trying to be reasonable. We asked for 30. It costs us $20,000 per month to run it. It's very expensive because you do need to have, we do take in people that have drug and substance abuse. There's lots of, these are the most vulnerable homeless in our, in our city and in our valley. So I thank you and ask your support to send a letter to the board of supervisors. And then we will follow through. So thank you very much. I'll take any questions if you have them.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Kathy a question. I attended that wonderful luncheon, and it was just full. How many people do you think?
So we had almost 200 people. We were kind of stacking them into the Burlingame Hall. It was a little, a little on the edge. And our people that gave to the auction, it doubled. People that gave to donations doubled over the previous years. And we had the fund in need for, to make up the difference, and we reached that goal. So we netted over $50,000, which for a small little luncheon, it's pretty, pretty, I don't wanna say damn in public, but pretty darn good. So we thank, thank all the people. I couldn't believe the support we had. It was pretty overwhelming. And checks are still coming in, still coming in now.
And I think your $400 fund drive?
Yes. We met the goal of the 400 fund.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So we were asking 100 people for $400, but we're sort of leveraging the money that the city gave us, plus, but there are different churches that are continuing to give to us, different Sonoma Valley Women's Club. I mean, lots and lots of civic organizations are stepping forward. Alliance, Mooses, we got them all. So we're really grateful, really grateful. So this is a very generous town. And so when we called out, people then came. And that result of the luncheon was that, an overwhelming stepping forward of people, really, saying, we want, they, people came up to me and said, we want the shelter here. We support you for not accepting the criteria of the county. So that was, that was gratifying.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you, Madeline. I mean, mayor. Any questions?
Any questions from the council? I, I, I'm, no questions. I-
I'm not sure if our president wants to say a few words.
Oh, okay.
That's-
The public session.
I'm Cynthia Broman, and I live on Heather Lane. And I just wanna say, there has been this marvelous shift. And the city of Sonoma, I think, has come out as a shining example of a small community trying to take on a big job. And I find it so, not amusing, I don't mean it that way. And I understand the fires. I mean, this is before that, we were denied the funds. But the whole thing is, it so totally has flipped. And the city has said this over and over again. We're supporting the homeless of Sonoma Valley. Why isn't the county helping? And we reached out to the county, but we also, we had two masters. We had the city and the county. And the city wants to take care of its local homeless. And I, that totally makes sense to me. Because we can't heal everybody's homelessness or serve, you know. And so we just couldn't accept people coming from Santa Rosa, from Petaluma, from all, you know. So anyway, I wanna thank the city for that tremendous support. And the people, I think, have noticed it, like she said about the fundraiser. The people have stepped up and said, well, we can do our bit. But that's all we can do. We can't do the county's bit. So thank you very much, mayor. Thank you.
Are there any other comments regarding this? If not, then I'm going to close, close the public comments session, section. For the council. Thank you.
Oh, I think this is a no-brainer. I assume we're gonna send a letter to the county. But I, you know, what the county's doing here by not providing any funding, zero funding, is really cruel. And it seems a lot like playing politics with human beings. And in addition to just the lack of compassion that's shown by giving us zero funding, I think it's outrageous that we provide TOT tax and all these other things to the county, and that somehow it's acceptable that we get not even close to our fair share of services. And that's something we gotta work on. We talked about it in our goal setting, about the relationships we need. But it should be completely unacceptable to have any district, supervisor's district, receive a grossly disproportionate share of funding, because we're contributing a lot to the economy of Sonoma County, and we deserve to have our people taken care of. So this is one small thing that we can do. And I'm sure we'll be working with SOS to figure out what else we can do to make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Carrie?
So I agree that we have to do something with the county. I think our supervisor owes it to us. It's not to try to make a joke out of anything, but I was at a fundraiser in Napa on Saturday night, or Friday night, I don't remember. It was for Clinico Lay, where they raise money for medical issues and farm workers and people that don't have the resources. And it raised hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I was talking to one of our senators and a couple of supervisors from Napa County. I said, well, maybe we should just carve out Sonoma and bring it into Napa County. Because we're a little closer to them and the kind of work that they're doing to really take care of their community. And because we, as David mentions a lot, we're at the end of the pipeline. And I really feel like we're more at the end of the pipeline on this particular issue. So I'm gonna support, I think we should ask for 100,000 instead of 30,000, and then settle for 50. So I would rather make the letter a little stronger and take it that way. So I'll be supporting.
I will also be supporting the letter. And I know our mayor calls it shameful, and I totally agree. I think it is shameful.
Throw in one more comment. It's been illuminating having these conversations with the CDC and Supervisor Goran. And general sentiment seems to be that Sonoma historically has kind of stayed down here. We do our own thing. We take care of our people, and we do a really great job at it. But especially with something like this, where, you know, this doesn't stop at any kind of imaginary city line, and it needs to be a city and valley thing together. And we're realizing as a city that we just are too small to shoulder this issue alone. So, and it seems to be that there, you know, people in Santa Rosa, like, want to be, have closer relationships with us. I think that, especially with these issues like homelessness, that we do need to be partners with the county. So I think, I think both sides want to come closer together. But since we operate so differently, we get to be small and very intimate, and we don't have to have all of these, like, you know, seemingly nonsensical, like, rigid restrictions and things. But that's just how they do things. So I think moving forward, there's hope. Unfortunately, I don't think it's gonna, well, it didn't happen with the formal process this time. I'm hoping, and I'm not sure, did they tell us any, did Supervisor Goran give any sense of the likelihood of our success on our request? I think that it seemed like it was positive. So if anybody has any friends on the board of supervisors, you can call them and let them know that these letters are coming. But, so I think it's, I think we're going to go on a journey together with the county and hopefully be closer friends in the end. But it's gonna be, we have a long way to come towards each other.
That's absolutely true. It's, I think the city manager and you and myself, we have a, we're going to be meeting with BJ Bischoff, who is going to be working on this homelessness issue here in the county. But, and I explained to Jeffrey Ross, who was the assistant director of whatever, and, sorry, CDC, I don't wanna be disrespectful because I'm so annoyed. But what, but what we, what I said to him was, this isn't just the homeless program. It's more than that. It's transportation. It's the other things that we don't get here at the end of the pipe. And I don't know how we got, we got forgotten, but I think it has to do, we were told that there's this GAPS analysis coming forward, and they'll study to see what the issues are, and they'd really like to get to know us better. That doesn't seem to be, that didn't seem to fall out the way that we thought it would. And I put in a call to Jeffrey Ross today, and that's why Rachel and I went into the room. He didn't leave a message. I wonder why. But you know what? Here's what I love about being, I used to be, come from the biggest city in the county. We're one of the smallest. And here's what I love the best about being the smallest. You've tapped a giant. And you know what happens when you tap? You tap us, we get back. So I think we've awoken something here by tapping this. And I think we're gonna get this money. I don't know how we're gonna do it, but we're gonna have to do it. Because I think it's an organization that's so well-respected, not without problems. We, you know, we all have our problems. But you know what? Who amongst us are gonna take homeless into their homes? You're the ones that do the job. You do it. And that's how it is. So I really, I'm just looking for a motion, I guess. Thanks.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve- Okay. I will make a motion to approve authorizing sending a letter signed by the mayor to the Board of Supervisors requesting additional funding.
Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Aye.
Councilmember Hunley?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harrington?
Aye.
Mayor Aggermonte?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good luck to us. Right? Good luck to us all. This is an important city. Maybe that's what we've gotta do, is show them how important we are when we get something done like this. Thank you. So, our city clerk.
The next item is 6.2, Discussion and Direction of the Update and Establishment of Administrative Fine Procedures and Imposition of Fines for Violations of the Municipal Code.
Great. Mayor Aggermonte, members of the council. So tonight I have with me, my gosh, I just went blank, Bob Smith, sorry. Bob, our city prosecutor. Oh, my gosh.
I have one of those faces.
My apologies, no dinner yet. So Bob Smith, who's been our city prosecutor for a number of years, and he was also, almost about two years ago, took over the management and creation of the city's first formal code enforcement program. Prior code enforcement was done kind of decentralized by different departments following up. And the council made a decision and invested with a half-time code enforcement officer under Bob's management and leadership. And also, as you know, John Abachi with our city attorney's office. And the purpose of this nice presentation is to talk about giving some new tools to our code enforcement program, and to get council's comments and policy direction before we bring you back in ordinance. So with that, I'll turn it to Bob and John.
Thank you. Good evening, Eric Aggermonte, Vice Mayor Harrington, fellow council members. I don't get in front of you very often, but this was the right night to be on the agenda, because I went to my first SOS fundraiser, that luncheon. It was fantastic. So glad to be here for that. And my wife and I put in our first garden plot at the Garden Center on Saturday. So to the lawyers on the, on the DIS, you'll be appreciated that it's legal file, my old legal file that I have turned upside down and use for planters now. So they're actually much more productive making useful things rather than trouble for people. So anyways, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Just to give you a little background on code enforcement, and we'll be short, that prior to spring of 2016, the city really, as the city manager stated, relied on individual department personnel to pursue violations of the Sonoma Municipal Code that were not the responsibility of the police department. So for example, building code violations, or planning, or zoning violations. So the use of department personnel that weren't trained in code enforcement practices was determined to be marginally effective, substantially inefficient, and with significant distraction of resources. So the city contracted in March by amendment to the existing services contract with my office for code enforcement services to provide a part-time code enforcement officer for 24 hours a week. So the responsibility of code enforcement is, we have a code enforcement officers on duty 24 hours a week, it's three days a week, usually Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It's responsibility to respond to all citizens' staff inquiries within 24 hours. We investigate and document all requests for service. We prepare evidence and represent the city at all hearings. We handle all Superior Court appeals. We handle search warrant application and executions. We've only had to do one so far, but we participated in three, two with the local police department, one with the FBI. We have limited patrol duties, mostly that's driving around, especially in springtime, leaf blowers, that sort of thing, the plaza on market nights, looking for smoking violations, et cetera. We're also responsible for the education and implementation of SMC provisions. So last year, we opened, well, the staff that we do that with is, we have one code enforcement officer who's on duty 24 hours. We have a part-time administrative assistant who's bilingual, so she can answer any questions that, any inquiries or issues that come to us with Spanish as primary language can be helped. And of course, my oversight. Last year, we opened 505 cases. We closed 317. We brought revenue into the city roughly $59,000 last year, 23 and 1/2 were illegal vacation rentals, building permit-related issues, about 13,5. Business licenses were 18,000. Vehicle-related, excluding parking, was about another 4,000 of the miscellaneous ones. So that was last year. And to enforce the municipal code, essentially, there are four tools. You have infraction, you have misdemeanor process, civil action for abatement, and the administrative notice and order. And they all apply. If you look at the code, any violation of the city code, there's a little confusion there, but John will straighten this out on that, can go any of those ways. For code enforcement, and quite frankly, having been involved in all the rest of those, the easiest and most efficient method or tool that we use is the administrative notice and order. And essentially, what that is, that is a great process. It really works well with property-related issues. So if you've got an ongoing issue, so a building code violation, or a zoning violation, unpermitted improvements, et cetera, this is really a great process for that. It requires formal notice, and it gives, with a time to cure, and advisement of a penalty accrual for non-curing, which is $250 per day, every day that it hasn't been, it hasn't been cured. There's a hearing required before the penalties can be imposed. And the fines are payable directly to the city. And that's a great process, but it, it isn't really the most effective process. And what we're asking for tonight is another tool. And it is a, the proposal is for an administrative citation process. So it's kind of like writing a ticket. So it's really applicable to transitory violation, smokers, somebody standing in the alley smoking, and you ask them to stop, and they say, oh, yeah, sure, I was unaware of the, of the ordinance. Then you come back the next night, and they're smoking again. So, yeah, okay. We gave you a warning. But there's no way we can use the notice and order process to do that. They don't need a two-week period to cure. They need patches. So anyway, that's a primary example. It requires contemporaneous observation by the issuer, so whoever it is, me or the code officer, we have to see him doing it. And the citation fine amount is fixed. It's 100 for, well, the maximum is 100 for a first offense, 200 for second, 500 for third. And there is an appeal hearing only if the recipient of the ticket requests it. So, and again, fines are payable directly to the city. So it's a little bit different than the existing notice and order process. And I think the two of them hand in glove will help us with a lot of the things we do, including, you know, we do patrol the Montini and the Overlook Trail once a week. And typically, I'll tell people, usually it's me, I tell people, hey, can't have a bike up here, can't have a dog. What are you gonna do about it? Send you a notice, you have two weeks to get this bike off the hill, and, no. And you know what? People up there use bad words with me. I'm surprised. I try to be polite, and they say things that I won't even repeat here. So, but that would help us, at least having the ability to do that. And the most pressing issue at this point in time, quite frankly, is smoking. We don't really have any way to enforce the smoking ordinance. And we're starting to get a lot more calls about people who are saying, oh, these people are smoking, I saw them smoking down there tonight. And I'm going, yeah. When are you gonna do something about it? I said, we're working on it. Don't worry about it. So that's what we're asking for, basically, is this administrative citation process. And it's writing a ticket. The ticket is very comprehensive. It explains to them exactly what their rights are, how they can appeal it, what they have to do to, to appeal it, and what the amounts are. So I'm open for any questions, or I'll turn it over to John, whatever's appropriate.
I'm sorry, which, I'm just thinking, let's, sorry, let's have John finish, and then we'll get any full council questions.
So this, this item tonight is on for discussion and direction. And if the council gives us such direction, as Bob was alluding to, we will be going forward with preparing an administrative citation and administrative notice and order ordinance, which would have procedures for administrative citation on the one hand, administrative notice and order on the other hand. Most of those procedures would be established by state law or due process of law principles. However, there are a few items that we are looking for direction from the council on that are discretionary with the city. Primarily, you would see that the ordinance would establish fines. And the council looks at the table that was prepared, and part of the staff report, the upper half talks about administrative citation, that process, which is for temporary or transitory violations. The fine structuring that we're contemplating is that there be a maximum fine that is established in the ordinance by the council. And the maximum would be $100 for a first offense, $200 for a second offense, and $500 for a third or subsequent offense within a year, except for building code violations, which would have $100 for a first offense, $500 for a second offense, and $1,000 for a third or more, for third or more offenses during one year. Now, the importance of that is that it would only be a maximum that would be established by the ordinance, and that would leave a discretion with the prosecutor, with the citing officer, however that process is handled internally, to determine what the fine would be. That would be on the citation, that the cited party would then need to determine whether they're going to pay that fine, deposit the fine and request a hearing, or not pay the fine, not request a hearing, and, you know, do nothing, which, no system is perfect. So there will be some of those. The difference is, the administrative notice and order, the fines that we're contemplating for that, which would be those continuing violations, those property-related violations, would be a flat fine of $250 for a first offense per day, and a flat fine of $500 for a second or subsequent offense during a year. Again, it would be per day. So that's the fine structuring that we're contemplating and we're bringing before the council, and giving the council the opportunity at this point to discuss and provide us direction on. It may be that that structuring the council is comfortable with. It may be the council is not. But within that is the maximum fine structuring versus the set fine. And then if there are any particular offenses that the council would rather establish something less, or a set fine as to any of those specific violations. That's what we're looking for direction on from, from the council.
Thank you very much.
I just, I just want to clarify one thing for John. So John, in the ordinance, would the council be setting the max, and then there be a different document? Let's say, for example, smoking or leaf blowers, council wants something lower for those offenses? Or within the ordinance, would the actual, if there was a lower fine amount, would the ordinance have those specific items listed? Or do we do it with an annual fee resolution, or in a different way, if council wanted something lower for a specific type of citation?
So certainly, a lower fine could be established, say, in administrative citation of smoking, for instance. Perhaps for all other violations, a maximum fine is $100 for a first offense. And the council would want to have a maximum fine of $50 for a first offense. I mean, certainly that could be established in the ordinance, or perhaps as a table attached to the ordinance. But I would also want to add that code enforcement is not looking to just cite people for violations the minute that they are seen. Voluntary compliance is always the best method. And so I think the intention would be that if there is a violation, say, smoking in the park, that an officer sees, the officer would say, you know, put out your cigarette. And if the individual puts out their cigarette, then the matter can, can end there.
Yeah, I, just to echo that, voluntary compliance is what we're after. Even with all of the calls we were receiving, dozens and dozens of calls on leaf blowers when it first came out, through education, essentially, of the landscapers, we only had to issue one, one notice and order to one landscaper. And since then, calls had dropped dramatically. So I think we got through that with only one, one notice and order sent out. Most of the people I run into that are smoking are compliant, they say, oh, I didn't know. I said, well, that's sign you just ground your cigarette out on, that little red target says no smoking, but, okay. But they, they, most people are, you know, they're good citizens. They'll do what you ask them to do. It's the chronic problem that won't, that makes it difficult for all the law-abiding citizens. Well, he's smoking white. So, I don't think it matters as much on the amount. I just need direction about what you guys think is fair on that. I think with smoking, for example, $50 is probably plenty, as long as it escalates up steps, so that the second and third one. There are people out there that would pay $50 to smoke on the plaza if they had to. But $100 may be accurate for the marijuana grow enforcement that we're responsible for. So just here to get direction, but to reassure you that we are not out to be a revenue generator.
So I think at this point, if you have any questions, I think, Amy, I think I, oh, I'm sorry.
What is the method of collection after you cite somebody?
With, with the proposed citation process, payment is at City Hall.
I'm just saying, you send me a citation, I don't pay it, now what?
Well...
Or you, I'm riding my bike on the Overlook Trail, and you stop me and give me a ticket, and how are you gonna make me pay it?
Well, the enforcement mechanism is another area that we have to focus on, because we don't really have a methodology for collecting those fines.
I was also thinking, like, if a tourist is here smoking, and you issue them a ticket, and then, we're never gonna be able to make them pay it.
Right.
Oh, Rachel?
Mine's was gonna be similar to that, but how, so, because people, what if they don't have their ID on them, because they don't have to? So if you can't figure out who this person is, and you give them a piece of paper, then it is just more symbolic as a gesture?
Well, it actually, yeah, those people, and let me just explain that before this thing is implemented, we will have gone through a ride-along training period with all the CSOs and everybody else who issues tickets to make sure that we understand it, because it's the same issues they face. And we also have access to uniformed officers at all point in time. So if somebody refuses to identify themselves, we don't even have a radio, we have them, but we use a cell phone, and there'll be an officer there. But for the most part, people go along with it. I mean, you've been up and watched arraignment calendar. If it wasn't for the good people who stood up and said, yeah, I'm guilty, the whole system would collapse.
Oh, Carrie?
I forgot, but maybe I'll...
So a couple of comments. So one thing I don't see on here is the noise ordinance.
Right.
And is that because the code enforcement doesn't work it?
We can send, we can send, you have your choices. It would depend on the situation. But typically, if it is a chronic problem with an event location, then we would use the administrative notice and order, and let them know what's happening. If it's a pop-up or something like that, and it's a lot of noise, and people are complaining, and it's over the city limitations, we might issue them a citation.
I'm thinking of vacation rentals, that sort of thing.
Oh, yeah, definitely vacation rentals.
Where the music goes on at 10 o'clock, then law enforcement leaves, and then it goes on again, and that sort of...
That's a perfect example of effective use of that, yeah.
Because I'd like to see that included in this to make it significant, because if somebody's renting that vacation rental lot for, you know, 4,500 for the weekend.
Yeah.
I mean, I think a $500 fine would be right in that zone. That would be...
Yeah. Well, they actually have to go, if they get in, if we find out that they're a IVR, then we will put them up to a hearing. And what they need to do is go back and make good on all the prior TOT that they owe.
Sure.
And... And so we get voluntary compliance. So in other words, yeah, we collected a lot of money from vacation rentals, but those are, those weren't fines imposed because they didn't stop, that was money they paid in TOT, back TOT that they owed, so.
And then as far as collection, I'd be open to the idea, and I have no idea if it's even legal or not, in the state of Wisconsin, when you get pulled over, they run your credit card right there in the car. So that way, you don't have, if you don't have a credit card or cash, you have to go down to the jailhouse to make arrangements to pay, just for, for a speeding ticket, not for any-
Okay.
So something where there, there might be an opportunity with a city-owned device, phone, that sort of thing, to run the square immediately.
Square.
And to give them the opportunity, well, if you want to go through the process, it'll be $50 or $75, but if you want to pay now, it's $25, don't do it again. And I'll leave it with the last thing, we went on vacation in San Clemente and Laguna Beach during spring break, and they had the big traffic signs out saying Laguna Beach is a non-smoking town, and we should do something like that here. I mean, I think we should have a permanent sign, or even a flashing sign when we have big events, holidays, Fourth of July, that this is a non-smoking town, and put them on both sides of town, and just put it out there. Let's, I think it's important to let people know, because we're a tourist economy, and people really don't have an excuse, and I think we could really cut it down.
I think, I think you're right, I've gone to all the major hotels and said, "You need to put on your website, before people can book a room, that they know that we, we pride ourselves in being a smoke-free environment." And this is great, because they're going to book a room in a, in a hotel in a city where nobody smokes, it's great, but you got to make it a great. If you get a six-pack a day attorney up here, and suddenly walks down the plaza and gets a ticket for smoking, you're probably not going to have a happy visit, and the hotel's not going to have a happy, happy guest. So I think, to the extent that we can convince them, they need to be more proactive on pushing our message up, this is a good thing, and this is a great place to come because of it, we're going to have a lot less problems.
Yeah, I just think that's something we could add to-
Yeah.
-the program, especially just part of the education process for our smoking ordinance. Thanks.
You know, I don't have any questions, my only comment is, I am definitely for the administrative citation. I've probably been the one up here the most saying that we pass a lot of stuff and we don't enforce it.
Right.
And I say that because it's true, not your fault. When you're talking about fines, if I'm hearing you correctly, you do do the voluntary compliance, meaning that if that person is belligerent, they're going to get a citation at that point, where, that's where the fine amount would probably, what I'm seeing here for smoking, would be a $100 fine. Because you would know these individuals, and you would see the repeat offenders, and in our legislation, if we were able to, to still allow that voluntary compliance, leaving up to you and your staff, if a tourist or a local is outside smoking in front of one of the bars, you tell them to put it out, they put it out, they go on their merry way.
Right.
They don't get the $100 thing.
Right.
But you come back tomorrow, and the same individual's smoking, and then at that point, you, it would cost them $100, and then it would go up from there.
Yeah, and if it's the same place, at the same establishment, then we would send the establishment a notice and order of violation to say that you are fostering smoking in front of your place, which is a violation of the ordinance, the smoking ordinance. I mean, you're absolutely right. The real evil that we're trying to address is not smoking, it's tobacco, right? So we should be outlawing tobacco, but we can't do that, so we're trying to kind of figure out a way to stop people from using tobacco, which makes it more difficult, because that's not the real issue. So anything that helps us get some education to the places that support smoking, a lot of the bars, we're having a lot, a lot of feedback from restaurants about their kitchen staffs smoking out in the back. And, you know, we're pointing out that, you know, probably having two ashtrays right by your kitchen door in the back is not a good idea to encourage them to, to do this. So, you know, I don't really care if somebody's belligerent with me, I mean, when I talk to those, there's a certain group of people who kind of pride themselves on, on John Courage and smoking, and they hang out around the fountain in the plaza, you approach them about smoking, they're over the top, but as long as they put it out, I don't care. It's when they keep doing it that they're going to get a ticket. Nobody likes code enforcement. I'm just going to tell you right now, the people that are impacted by it think you never do enough, and the people who are accountable think you're way over the top. So there's, belligerency wouldn't surprise me, but nevertheless, it would be repeated behavior, it's not how they responded to me. Thank you.
So if you want to find where people smoke after hours, the little alley behind Bank of Marin, I bet you can walk there right now and find 2,000 cigarette butts.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and it's just, it, it looks like garbage, and it's just, it's awful. But I would just, I would walk down that little alley and-
Well, I'm afraid to walk down any places that don't have any enforcement tools.
Happy to have a citation for that.
And I'd like to take it out to the public for comments.
Mom? I work on a smoke-free campus.
So at this point, I'm going to close the public comment, and, and anyone have any, oh, I'm sorry, Rachel.
Well, I thought we were doing questions before, so now I have a comment. So I think this is a great tool, very necessary. I think that it should be rolled out in a very delicate way, like $20 first tickets, at least for like the first couple months, and then go up to like $50. And I think that, like, a parking ticket amount, $40, $50 for a first ticket, because it's, I mean, I'd find it ballooning after that, if it's someone's fifth time, and I would, you know, fine them as much as you legally can, but it, I just think for visitors to walk away with a $100 ticket for doing something, whatever it is, riding their bike on the sidewalk or something, I think it would give them a bad impression. And people here, I think it would just turn people against the city, and they'd start resenting us a lot. And I do think this is important, but I don't think, I just don't really see it as needing such a heavy-handed approach.
I would agree with you, if I can comment back on that. There are certain things, I think when we look at the, the noise, and the noise, if it gets to a point where you're citing for noise, probably $100 is the right amount. And also, grow limitations for the marijuana, probably $100 is going to stop them from doing that, otherwise if it's $20 a ticket.
So would that be, so that would count as, oh, because it's faster to do it that way, as opposed to doing this $250 a day?
Yeah, because if you do it, you have to give them a cure period.
Yeah.
So they'll pull it up and cure it.
Totally, yeah.
And so that's the problem, you need to give them a ticket with the admonition that the next ticket's going to be even higher, so you need to pull that now.
And the, so this is all within a year, is when you sort of, the fees start doubling or going up exponentially, that's for a one-year period?
The, actually, for the administrative notice and order, it's merely for a second, I think it is a second event within a year, you're right, I don't have to think of that, yeah.
So does that mean January 1st, everyone gets-
They get, yeah, they get one-
A free pass again?
Free shot, go back to $250, yeah.
So these, these fine amounts are based on what the government code establishes for infraction violations, so if Bob were to prosecute these same violations as infractions in criminal court, those would be the established maximum amounts, so that's where they come from.
Oh, well, I will say, having grown up in San Francisco, that I have a little, you know, anti-fine feelings going on, that that really can be a quality-of-life destroyer, to have constant tickets, which you started off as an idea to change behavior, and then later it becomes a source of revenue, even though that's not the original idea, and then it's just like completely toxic. But I would support a low fine for things more as to make people aware, to have some enforcement other than just not asking, asking them to stop. I think a small fine, like 25 bucks for smoking and some other things. I'm not sure practically about how you would know if it's the first time or the second time. I don't care for discretion, because I know we'll be accused of favoritism, that, "Oh, I got a $20 fine, he got a $250 fine, it's because you don't like him," I think that's dangerous. And then, it just seems very hard to administer if it's not the exact same fine every time. So, in terms of like keeping track of how many times they had it, and then following up with it, and it just, practically speaking, it seems difficult.
You mean that, like, the number of offenses?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's a good question, because you'd always want to err on the side of, you know, they're, they're right. I think, and we haven't really thought about it, we might be issuing a citation that's, instead of just giving a verbal warning, issuing them a warning citation, then we would have a record of it.
I was wondering about that same thing.
Yeah, and then, and that might be an easier way to track. And really, with regard to tourists, so far, they all put their cigarettes out. I mean, they, they're good about it, my concern is they go back to the hotels, and they're really upset, and they just have a bad Sonoma experience, and that's not good. So, yeah, I'm not too worried about.
What is the, at the end of this, we're not coming up with the final numbers, right? We're just talking about it?
Yeah, no, this, not looking for specifics, really looking for kind of a, a bit of a gut check from council, kind of a policy-level check of what are you thinking?
So for that, so my summary would be, like, keep the fees relatively low, fines low, make it fair, have people pay the same thing without discretion, so that people know what the fine is in advance.
You mean, just as between people, same level of offense?
Yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree. In fact, on the citation form, it's going to look, hopefully, with just checkboxes with pre-printed amounts for the fines.
And I guess, I, the only way I can imagine you doing it is asking the person, "Have you ever received a ticket for this previously?" I mean, it's a little-
There are people who will say, "Yes, I did."
Sure, yeah, 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 yeah.
And you know what, there, the people are going to get a, a pass.
Yeah, so, okay, all right, well, that's my two cents, sounds good.
Or, well, this is going back to keeping people straight, because I could just see, like, a sort of terrible publicity for the city if, like, somebody got mistaken for somebody else, and whatever, but, so, I mean, would people ever have to present an identification?
When you ask them, right, they should present identification if you're issuing them the citation.
Because I would just want, if we end up having escalating fees, something that was very, very careful with that.
There's no obligation to carry an identification in America at this time, so-
No.
Well, I'm not saying that, that's the problem with it.
If you don't have one.
No, it's not illegal to not have an ID, you're not required to have an ID.
Ask the police, if you don't have an ID, they take you right to jail.
When you're driving, because it's regulated by the state, you're required to have an identification to prove that you're licensed to drive, but when you're walking down the street, you're not required to have an ID. For sure, guarantee you.
Right.
As long as we have the Constitution, you do not have to have an ID.
You may have to identify yourself, but you don't necessarily have to have a identic, form of identification other than your recollection.
Yeah, I just don't want to overthink this. My main objective is giving you the tools, so you can enforce the laws that we pass up here. And I would say that because of voluntary compliance, the discretion of your small office, and I think a lot of the questions we're asking here, there's only two individuals, yourself and one other.
Yeah.
So you know these people, or you know the situations, so I would want to leave that to you. I like the max fines. I, I think it's time that we work on a complaint-driven society, which I think that's what STMA likes. That means that if somebody is smoking, somebody calls you, you come down, they put it out, the repeat offender, they get a $100 fine. Then there's this other way of enforcement, is where you're out looking for them, that's at the plaza, you know, no smoking at the plaza, same thing, you have discretionary. I don't, I don't think it sounds heavy-handed to enforce the rules that we legislate, or don't legislate them. So my direction, and you want to do a gut check, Councilmember Cook says that I think that we should do the fine amounts, the maximum that the state has, and hopefully, with Gary's sign that says that we're a no-smoking town, because we, we are a no-smoking town, and I could tell you, I've seen four smokers in the last week. I hang out by the Letson Hotel a lot of times, but, you know, it, it's happening, and it's really, it's unfair.
I just want to add to that, so, Bob, when you speak about the hotels, so, I think virtually every hotel that has a non-smoking room, most of them, I think, are non-smoking hotels here in Sonoma, they also have a document you sign when you check in, that is $200 to $400 for, if you smoke in your room, and they, they find that you smoked in your room, you're going to pay three, four, two, three, four, $500 to clean that room.
I can confirm that, my husband had to pay $300, he thought he was being slick. $300 extra.
Well, the problem with the-
But he doesn't smoke anymore.
Is that there are no smoking areas in any of the hotels, they don't meet, it's physically impossible to comply with it. So if you check into that hotel, you just check your cigarettes at the desk, and pick them up on your way out of town. So that's, that's the issue, yeah.
I think we've sort of, you know, worn this out, and so, what's the pleasure?
Yeah, I don't, I don't need formal direction, really, this was kind of a check with the council to kind of get a sense-
Right.
And make sure you're comfortable, as we then put the time in to put the ordinance together.
Okay.
And we'll be working through some of these more kind of implementation detail-level issues next.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, are there any city council reports and comments, and/or comments?
I just wanted to report back about Sonoma Clean Power set aside $1 million to provide aid to people who are victims of the fire, and there's an ad hoc committee of five members, and I'm representing the valley on that. We have about $300,000 left. So far, the Ecology Center is the only organization in the valley that got any money, they got $50,000. I contacted the Community Center, the Mentoring Alliance, and also KSVY, and I asked them to submit, or consider submitting proposals, so that they could receive funding as well. The Community Center and the Mentoring Alliance did submit proposals, and I don't know if KSVY did or not, but of the remaining funds, I'm hopeful that some other Sonoma Valley nonprofits will be able to receive some of that funding.
Any other reports from council members? None? Our city manager, comments or announcements?
No, no report. At this point, we are working on our next, the only thing is, we're working on our next About Town newsletter, that we hope to be putting out this week, talking with a whole focus on emergency preparedness. And there's a lot of great community fairs and that nonprofits are putting on, we want to help promote, and, and just talk generally, and make sure folks are keeping in their mind on how to be ready, and so we can all help take care of each other and ourselves as moving forward.
All right, well, thank you very much, I'm adjourning the meeting for May 14.